Welcome to the Stevens Memorial Library Board of Trustees Annual Meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order at 5:01. And I'll do a roll call. There's myself, Anne Kavanagh. Mary Deschaux.
Stan Lippert, hello.
Oh. Bill Duffy is not here. Eva?
Yeah.
Stan? Anne already.
Dog is.
Mark? Mark's here. Earl?
Here.
Here.
Cindy Maza?
Here.
And Dee Casey?
Proudly present.
All right, great. Cindy, any public comments?
Nope, no, I've checked several times.
Okay. Okay, then I'm going to start with my comments. I thought I would do a quick review of the year, since it was such a momentous one. The past year has been extremely challenging, dealing with COVID-19, but Kathleen and Cindy and the staff quickly adapted to meet these challenges head-on. We started our Board of Trustees' year last November with very high expectations for the past year. We were excited to meet our new town manager, Melissa, at our December meeting. She suggested we make a wish list and come up with a master plan for the library. We were midway through our current long-range plan, and we're pretty far along into the process of buying new furniture and rearranging our spaces. We also had plans to meet with an architect to start building study. However, once COVID, the COVID shutdown came in mid-March, all of these plans were derailed. However, Kathleen, Cindy, and the staff did a phenomenal job shifting resources to offer more online content such as eBooks, videos, online subscriptions from magazines, newspapers, genealogy searches, other learning opportunities like cooking and baking and music and art and all sorts of new offerings. The online offerings for children and teens were also bolstered. It was Storytimes, online scavenger hunts, virtual arts and crafts, remote field trips, STEM tutorials, and teen book groups. Many new library cards, e-cards were offered remotely, and online help was available. Then, the building had to be adapted to meet all the COVID safety regulations in preparation for the staff returning for curbside pickup and eventually appointments for indoor visits. Furniture was removed. The reference and computer area was cleared out. The walls were painted, and tables were placed along the walls spaced apart with barriers. And new painting carpet has been chosen for the young adult room and will soon be updated. Curbside pickup started in June and continues at a steady pace. Summer with the Stevens was offered virtually. There were online programs, reading challenges, and arts and crafts kits that could be picked up. Many resources continued to be available online through the children and teens' virtual rooms. And very importantly, Stevens has partnered with six other local libraries called Libraries Working Towards Social Justice to present a variety of programs related to social justice issues. These thought-provoking lectures and discussions will help Merrimack Valley residents to think about and address current events and troubling issues in today's society. Stevens also partnered with the North End over the schools again for Race Amoni Day. And the Friends of the Library even managed to hold a very successful book sale under the tent at the Stevens Estate. So, all in all, I would say the year is ending up on a very positive note. Thank you, Kathleen and Cindy, for all your hard work and creativity. And so, now, looking forward to next year, it's time to get back on track. And I would like to talk about some of the committees, which we usually do at the annual meeting. I'd like to call up the Bylaw Review Ad-Hoc Committee. Once again, we did that last November, but, and a little bit of progress was made, but that also got shut down. So, I asked Mary if she would do that along with Eva and Earl. So, a review of those bylaws is in order. And the other committee I want to reactivate is Long Range Planning. We have about 18 months left in the current long-range plan, and we should evaluate our progress, meeting our goals, and deciding what new goals we'd like to meet and what, and which ones that we've already identified that we want to meet. So, we have to review that. And the timing also works out well with the town's master plan and the request from Melissa to work on a library master plan. So, that committee has myself and Stan and also Mary, but we'll be calling on some of the other committees for input. And we'll re, the next long-range plan we need to do is fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '27. So, it's not really that far away. Time goes so fast. And then, lastly, we would like to revisit the 501(c)(3) study, and Mary has also agreed to look into this. So, those are the big plans for the upcoming year, and that is all I have right now.
If I could ask the chair if I could add?
Yes.
So, the Friends also donated probably, I don't know, Kathleen, 20 boxes of books for us to give out on the food distribution line. And also, Deanna brought them to the various housing authorities so that people could have books, because when, you know, the library was not open, people were asking for things to read. So, there was one little girl in particular that would come through the line with her mom, and she always dressed up as a princess. So, we would dig through the books and try to find a princess book, and her mother told us at the end that we had no idea what that meant to her during that time to have that connection. And I said, "Thank the Friends of the Library."
Oh, that's awesome. Thanks for sharing that. So, what was that that they shared the books to?
It was the high school food distribution line. So, the summer, the Summer Eats program that Kathleen helped to do last year. We basically started at the library, but then moved it to the high.
Right.
Yeah, so it was part of that program. And Deanna got adult books and brought them, and then I had, you know, people, at one point, people were requesting certain authors, and we're like, "Well, we're not a library." Like, "I don't have another, you know, Tom Clancy book for you. I have the one I had," you know? They were really very, very appreciative, especially people that came through with kids, because they had already gone through their whole household stash of children's books. So, I was very appreciative to Kathleen and her staff for getting that together for us.
Well, that's great. Okay, so, next thing on the agenda is the Endowment Fund Investment Report. Did we?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, for our last vote, we began, we wanted to hold off on investing monies until after the election, which we did. But shortly after the election, I began moving monies into the bond funds, and they are now fully allocated. And I'm still waiting on stock funds at this point. So, those are the last funds to be loaded in, and I expect to do that probably before December 4th. And then, the full transition from the Eaton Vance Funds to the Board of Trustees' Library Managed Funds will be complete.
Oh, that's great. Good time.
And I think next, next on the agenda will be to discuss the budget policy statement, talking to the kind of spending that we would mandate for ourselves out of the endowment, because we've been, we've been fairly conservative with spending these funds. And, you know, they were donated by the donors for good purposes, and we want to make sure that we're executing on those good purposes. But, and so, to that end, I've had, I've reviewed some budget policy statements. We also had some samples that were given to us from Eaton Vance. And I think we should relook at the one we have today and make it more structured and more, let's call it prescriptive.
Yes, okay, that sounds good. That can also kind of be wrapped into that.
Mark, just so I'm clear, do you mean the investment policy statement?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the investment policy statement should have, well, let's put it this way. The investment policy statement is one half of two, a two-sided coin, right? The other half of that coin is spending, the endowment.
Right.
We know that that half has restrictions that are placed on it by the donors. In some cases, in some cases, leave up to the Board of Library Trustees' discretion. But in any event, the, the level of that spending has not been particularly prescriptive. And to encourage us to do that, I think we should be, we should be discussing a prescriptive approach to mandate that the Board of Library Trustees spend a particular percentage of the endowment. Obviously, not principal, but interest in pursuit of those goals.
Yes, that makes sense. That was another thing we had started talking about last year that kind of got derailed, so.
So, we could wrap that in a budget policy statement, or we could also wrap it in under the investment policy. I think either one would work.
Okay, that sounds good.
We, Anne, we still have an, or we could have an investment committee, right?
Well, we do. We do have one.
And that, the last time we did this, isn't that how we produce the budget policy statement we have? So, could that committee go back and look at reviewing and?
That should, yeah, we should review that also. And would it make sense for us to come up with a budget at this? We kind of started all this last year, too. Like, we should come up with our own budget, kind of with the same timing as the town budget? Does that make sense?
Yes.
We will be doing that very shortly. Our budget instructions have come from the Chief Finance Officer, so that's one of the things I'll be talking about, what's the schedule.
So, yes, if we could, so, Mark, if you, if you could, like, see what we have, or how far we got with that, and review it.
Yeah, I'll leave that, I'll leave that charge.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Earl, Treasurers' Report?
How did that go?
We all saw it, I think.
Just to remember, we're looking at the, at the year-end reports. We're not looking at the monthly reports yet. We're still in the annual meeting?
Yeah, so this is a two-page report. It's, well, it's called Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Financial Report. And it basically summarizes the expenses for that fiscal year, or the checks written for that fiscal year. One thing to note is, I think, believe this is a new format. And Kathleen, thank you for coming up with the account codes that we now use. So, this makes it, you know, a little easier to keep track of where our spending is going. So, to more or less summarize for the, this past fiscal year for the Board of Trustees, the big groups of expenditures were in our discretionary use, staff development, and in programs. And I guess we should also keep in mind that basically when COVID hit in March-April timeframe, there really hasn't, there really weren't that many expenditures for the last quarter of the fiscal year. There were some at the beginning of this fiscal year, which had to do with COVID, and those we'll be reporting on, I guess, next year. So, the total expenditures, or checks written this year, were a little over $6,000, as it indicates. I don't know if anyone has any particular questions about the categories or the spending. It's pretty straightforward. If not?
That was a big accomplishment for, for us, because for a long time, you know, and that we were paying things, but we were not attempting to match that what was spent against the percentages of how funds were earmarked to be, you know, the donations were to be spent. And that was the beginning of last year. We were really trying to come back full circle and say, you know, "Here's the intent of what was donated, and here's what we've spent." We had had sort of a disconnect between those two. So, I think this coming year will be the first year that we're, and like, having the policy statement that Mark is recommending. If you have a statement that says we should spend, you know, 5% on staff endowment, then, or the staff development, then we need to know that what was spent and how it matches up to that. So, I think this year will be the first time we're able to have both parts of the information come together a little clearly for us to see.
Yeah, I know there was, there has been some discussion at board meetings relative to the donation that was made. You know, a significant donation was made a few years ago for staff development and training. So, it's good, or maybe, you know, it's reflective to look and see that the highest of the five major categories, the highest one is staff development and training this year. So, we are beginning, as Kathleen says, we have at least a way to link what we're spending to the funds that are being invested.
All right.
That's a, that's a really big accomplishment for us. That's, that was not an easy process to go through.
All that scanning and?
Yep. Earl and Mark were really instrumental, as well as Stan, and Bill Duffy, too, really helped us think a lot more about how to approach this.
Okay, great. And that ties in nicely also with the, yeah, the spending, the budget policy and all of that. Oh, yes, Steve?
Can I add, too, that Kathleen and Cindy need to take a lot of credit for helping me change the bargaining language in the contract to allow for better management of the professional development program? So, they need to take credit where credit is due. It's really a great system, and I think that's why you will see an uptick in the amount of professional development that's sought. So, kudos to them.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so, does anybody have anything else in this meeting? We'll keep the current committees the same, you know, for like, the two-year term. If you have any issues, I guess, you know, let me know. But I think everyone's on track with where we're at, so, very good.
Anne, this is, this is, we're going into the second of two years, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this is the middle of every, of these committees, and everybody's?
The halfway point, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, so, should we adjourn this meeting and go into our monthly meeting?
I'll second that.
Move to adjourn the annual meeting of the Board of Library Trustees of the Stevens Memorial Library.
I'll second that.
Everyone in favor? Oh, myself, I, Anne.
Stan, ye, I.
Eva, I.
Earl?
Mary, I.
Okay.
Mark, I.
All right. Then we're all in favor. Adjourned at 5:20. Wow, right on the button.
Now, we have, we have to wait 10 minutes to start our next meeting?
Do we have to? It says that immediately following the annual.
Not if it says immediately following. If you had posted a 5:30 definite time, you would have, but because you worded it immediately following, then no.
Okay. Well, then let's call to order the November Monthly Meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Stevens Memorial Library at 5:21.
I'm going to break in, because I was trying to get my mic unmuted here. I have a difference between the two agendas. Annual agenda says that at the bottom of the page. I was just trying to open the second agenda to see what it said at the top of the page.
Well, mine says immediately following.
But it says 5:30, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, I didn't see that. The one I printed out.
Do we have some elevator music to play?
Everybody can.
We have TV.
You can all go refresh our beverages or whatever, right?
Well, that's true.
I'm taking a break.
All right, well, we'll see everyone in eight minutes.
Mark, will you be home in eight minutes?
Uh, not eight, maybe 15. But Ca, maybe Kathleen can talk, can ask, answer a question for me. Did you receive the transfer of funds that we sent to the checking account, the TD Bank checking account?
I have not seen the, seen the check yet.
No, it's not a check. It's a direct transfer into the account.
Oh, so? So, will they send us a letter telling us that, or are they expecting us to just see it on the bank statement? Because I?
You will see it, you should have seen it on the bank statement, yeah.
Okay.
Or you check the balance.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look for the bank statement. I wasn't sure which way it was coming.
Yeah, the last, the last time we did this, we, we invested a little time in creating the transfer to the account, and so it would be easier. So, this is the first time, I think, we've transferred to it.
Yes.
But it would have been several weeks ago. So, it should be there.
Yep. I'll be honest to say, I don't always look at the bank statements in detail. I tend to hand them to Lisa and say, "Is there something I should know?"
Sure.
I put myself, I've sent myself an email to double-check for that. Thank you very much for doing that.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Kathleen, do you have online access to that account?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do you have online access to the TD Bank account?
I do not.
Earl does.
Yeah, Earl sees it, and, and Mark might be able to tell us, too. Have we been able to sort out the treasurer getting her access to the fidelity accounts online?
I think we have, although I did have to send a copy of one of the reports. I think it was the Eaton Vance report. But now that they're both combined, I think it'll be smooth.
Yes, that'd be wonderful. Five minutes to go.
I haven't gotten my calendars yet. When can I expect it?
Oh, Brad probably, did you get an email from him?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. How many did you order?
Three.
He, he didn't run out, so we needed to get more from the Historical Society. They had all the boxes. Do you want me to check on it for you, Mark? I can check.
Yeah, sure, yeah, if you can, just shoot him an email.
Sure. Okay, I will.
That'd be great, thank you.
Sure.
Can you, can you go someplace to buy them, like, to pick them up, or do they have to be mailed?
You can actually, if you order them, you can go to Brad Wakeman's house, and he will put, so you know, he's in the, Captain?
Yeah, that yellow?
Yeah, the yellow one. He'll put them out for you. If he knows you're coming, he'll put out an envelope with your calendars in them.
As a matter of fact, I just picked up my calendars this afternoon. And as I was there, he was just leaving his house to walk over to the Historical Society to get another box.
To get more, yes, right. Because I saw him send a message saying, "We need more," so.
Now, if I wanted, so I could, I could buy more calendars through the Improvement Society website, right?
Absolutely, yep. NAImprovementsSociety.org, yep.
Can you buy them at the Histor, oh, wait a minute?
Yeah, probably. Probably, but I'd rather you buy them through the Improvement Society.
Well, I don't know if they gave you the credit and the money.
Yeah, well, we, we've paid for half of them, half of the calendars, and the Historical Society paid for half. We, it was a project. We did it together, so, so we're expected to sell half, and they're expected to sell.
Okay, then I'll get them through the Improvement Society.
I tried to buy them on the, through the Historical Society, and I just couldn't do it. I had to go the little route.
You know, although, we had a great time working with them. It worked, it was a very nice, it's a good collaboration, so.
Stan, you picked yours up, and you didn't pick mine up?
Well, you know, it's funny, Earl. It's funny, I saw yours, and I said, "Should I pick Earl's up?" And, you know, I, but I, I just seemed like I was going to screw the system up or something, so.
Earl would go with his, yeah.
Now, I gotta go over there tomorrow, but that's all right.
That's okay. You should, a nice opportunity to see Brad's house and the cemetery.
And the cemetery.
There you go. He's on Academy Road, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
The closest house to the Historical Society.
By the way, he emails you when, you know, I ordered it, and I figure, and I'll pick it up. I never heard where I was going to pick it up. And then Brad emailed me and said, you know, "Your calendar's on my front porch whenever you're ready."
Right.
So, Mark, I'm surprised you didn't get an email.
Well, now I'm going to really scrutinize my email.
Okay. Do you want to do that first, and then just get back to me?
Oh, yeah, I could do that, sure.
Okay.
I think I'll hold off doing it while I'm in the car, though.
Absolutely.
That's what I thought you was asking.
I just bought mine.
You just bought yours right now?
Yeah, yep.
Good, good.
That was a good use of my four minutes.
You're right.
Yeah, there you go.
Exactly. Yeah, we're only doing a limited number, you know? We're doing 375.
Hearing about all these people buying them, I thought I better do it.
Yeah.
Does it have events that are going on in town throughout the year, or?
What it does have, Cindy, is it's, it has anniversary dates, like, the town's anniversary date, the founding of the Improvement Society, the founding of the Historical Society. And I have to say, I'm sad to say that we don't have a picture of the, the library, but, that, sorry.
Do you have the Gardening Club's 100th anniversary on there?
We do have Phyla, Phyla Slade, her, her picture, the Carson Barnard. Yeah, we don't have, we, I'm sorry to say, we don't.
August 5th, it's the 100th birthday.
Um, yeah, we don't have that. Here's one of my favorites. This is of the Old Center. This is.
Oh, yeah.
That historic picture. Bill Duffy would be happy to see that we have a picture of the Center School. I think, didn't he say he went to the Center School?
He did.
Yeah. Where he went to elementary school, right there at the Old Center. So, yeah. So, there are some cool, cool things in here. I like this one, too.
Oh, and the trolley.
On Main Street, yeah.
Looks like the Green Line cars, like the.
Yeah, doesn't it?
Wish we still had those trolleys.
That would be nice.
Oh, okay, it's 5:30.
Okay, 5:30, here we go.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 5:30. Another roll call, I guess. Anne, myself, Anne Kavanagh. Another roll call, I guess. Anne, myself, Anne Kavanaugh, here.
Stan here.
Earl here.
Mary here.
Eva here.
Mark here.
Okay.
Mark here.
We're all done then. Well, Kathleen.
All right, and Kathleen, Cindy and, Cindy and Dee.
Yep.
And the chair has already read the governor's proclamation, so she does not need to do so again.
Oh, okay.
Parliamentarian, right?
Isn't that big paragraph at the top?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, all right, good. Um, any public comments for this meeting?
No, no, I just checked and there are no public comments.
Okay. Um, I really don't have anything for, any comments for this. I made all my comments about the committees and everything. So I will hand it right over to Kathleen.
So I'll just do a, a quick review of some of the building topics. Some projects are going ahead. Eva will talk a little bit about the teen room because we need to actually vote for some funds for that. The historic doors have been resealed. They look wonderful. Uh, we've done a little more weatherization, which is putting some insulation up around the skylight. When you come in at historic entrance, you look up, there's actually a second skylight there that's, um, been insulated. The historic steps, uh, the engineering design, we've received a proposal which apparently is meeting our terms. And so it's being negotiated now, so we're hoping that by the spring, we will have the engineering design. And we'll be able to go out to bid for construction to redo the historic granite steps. The LED project, which is a Green Community Grant, is scheduled to start in about two weeks. It replaces all the light fixtures in the building. So if you drive by the library, you'll notice that there's a new giant closed container, which is gonna have all the new light fixtures in it. And, um, by the time we start, the fixtures project is scheduled to start on Monday, November 30th. There will also be two big dumpsters on our triangle lawn, so, um, they're expecting to be in and out in a week, which I think is wonderful and ambitious. And we will have much improved, uh, lighting throughout the entire building.
And that's at no cost to the library, correct?
No cost to the library, and I believe at no cost to the town either, that it's a, it's a complete grant for us. So that's a really, really good, really good deal. We, um, ordered the replacement utility shed, and so it's scheduled to be built and, uh, delivered next April, when we think it will be okay to be doing yard work again. And we submitted the capital improvement request for the parking study. So that will be as part of the capital improvement review in this year's, uh, coming up in this year's budget. And the last item on our building list are the, um, clay roof tiles, which need, uh, a few of them need to be, um, addressed. We're waiting for a bid or actually a quote to come back in from the roofing company. Once we have the quote, we'll be able to schedule that work. I am pressing that we get that work done before the weather gets much worse. So the tiles are not, um, at the moment causing us to have any leaks, but they are askew and, um, they are big, heavy tiles, so we don't want anything that's askew. We want everything really tightly fastened down. So that's for the building. Eva would like to talk about the teen room.
I can do that. It's, um, under old business, but I can certainly talk about the teen room now. Uh, so we have been working with the teen room, um, and looking at carpet options. Uh, the whole thought behind, uh, replacing the carpet in the teen room is because the carpet tiles that are in the teen room, since we've exhausted our, what's called attic stock of carpet tiles for that general field carpet that we use throughout the library, um, Rick had a great idea to, uh, take up the, um, the carpet tiles that are in the teen room that are good state and save those to replace the general field carpet. And what we're doing is, uh, replacing the, um, the teen room carpet with a new carpet because our general field carpet is no longer available. So, um, since that's a discreet room with, uh, the thresholds, it's less jarring to make that one look different. And we also think of it as sort of an improvement that can be a rolling improvement, um, if we decide. You know, here's a good way to, to make it a little bit more up to date. Uh, not that we have any problem with our general field carpet. So, um, we have finally selected the carpet that we'd like to go with. It's, um, it's a Millican carpet tile. It's called From the Whale Song Collection in style Narwhal in color coastline. So that, it's very creative. Um, it's a beautiful blue.
Sounds very nautical.
Yes, it's very nautical. Um, it is not, you know, our field carpet, you'll recall, is not linear. And linear is the real style these days, very linear. Um, so we didn't have a lot of options, but what we chose is definitely a fluid, you know, with that sea coast kind of, uh, name, too. It's fluid and, and it has a nice look to it. And it's a blue. It's a navy blue that picks up the navy blue that's in the field carpet. So.
It'll hide spots.
Yeah, it'll hide spots. Yep, it's a good, it's a good carpet. Uh, we had a consensus, right, Kathleen? There were five of us who stood around and said, yep, this is the best one, because we did have a number of samples. Um, so this is part of the improvement project for the teen room. Not only would we do the carpet, which the quote came in at, um, $5,749, but as part of that, we will refresh the rest of the room. And that means what we will do is paint the walls. And for about $250, we can paint the walls and make them the Gray Owl, Gray Owl, right, Kathleen?
Yes.
The paint that we have downstairs in the lower lobby that Rick has been painting steadily, and it's now made its way to the stairs. So if you haven't noticed before, it's a pretty light gray. So the gray will go very nicely with that blue carpet. And not only will the few walls that are exposed, the very few, uh, bits of wall that are exposed in the, in the teen room, but also the wall behind, within the bookcases, within the bookshelves. There's, um, it's painted maroon right now. It's quite dark. We're gonna paint it gray and make it lighter. Um, additionally, the ceiling tiles need a refresh because they've gotten a little dingy and old. So that would be done to the tune of $500. And then the blinds, a part of a project we're working on, getting, um, getting the cost for, for blinds. Actually, we have a cost, but the process is in, um, in, in play right now. Um, the blinds that are in there right now are quite dark. And they go with the color scheme that there currently is, but we're gonna lighten up the whole library. And we thought that's the right place to start, too. So, um, uh, I would like to ask that a motion be made for $6,499 be spent for those expenses related to this refresh and re-carpet of the teen room.
How much was it again? I'm sorry, Eva, how much was that again?
$6,499. And now this does not include the cost of the blinds because we don't have that discreet cost yet.
Would it, Eva, would you have a problem if I made a motion for either $7,500 or $8,000 not to exceed for that project?
I have no problem with that.
So let me move to, uh, my motion is to, uh, for the trustees to allocate from endowment funds, eight thousand, uh, an amount not to exceed $8,000 for the refurbishment of the teen room in the library.
Okay.
Good idea.
Would someone like to second that? Okay.
And Mark, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Anne, I am. I.
Stan, yes.
Mary, yes.
Mark, Mark, yes.
Earl, yes.
Eva, yes.
Okay, all in favor then? That passes.
Thank you.
That's exciting.
It is.
Eva, thanks, thanks to you and Cindy and Kathleen for all the work you've done to get us to this point. I know you've done a lot of research and looked at a lot of carpet samples, so thanks for all the work you've done.
It's exciting. And I, you know, this is a good time for us to be doing that work, too, because the, there'll be minimal impact to the patrons since we're doing it this time.
How, how soon might that project be undertaken?
Um, well, Kathleen, I can't recall if Andrea told us, um, what the, what the turnaround will be on getting these carpet tiles. Do you recall?
Um, she said it, and of course, we, we talked to her. It was at least two months ago now, maybe three. And one of the things that we know has happened is that, um, different states and different manufacturing industries have had, um, slowdowns as a result of it. So anything that they told us three months ago probably could be different. She did feel, however, that, um, in general, things were moving pretty smoothly in that industry. The first step, uh, we decided it would be smart to go in and paint the walls before we put down the new carpet. So Rick Parding has, um, said he's willing to take on the painting project. If, if we take the books off the shelf, which we agreed, um, he would paint the walls behind the shelves. And then, um, and then, so that gives us some time. We can coordinate with Andrea once we make the, um, order. So if, if we start on things like painting, um, we can get started relatively soon.
Can I, can I chip, Madam Chair, can I just check something? Can I, can I just give a huge shout out to Rick? I mean, he is amazing. He, I mean, he does not say no to anything. Um, he has been our PPE courier between Town Hall and Library. I wish I could clone him. But I just wanted to give him an official shout out because I know there are some segments of our staff that don't get shout out. And he is just one of the best that we have. I just wanted.
And you know, Rick, Rick is the one who came up with this solution for the field carpet by suggesting that we, we do this with teen room, yeah.
Wonderful. Maybe we should do something special for him. Like a thank you somehow. We'll have to talk about that.
So Stan.
You can give him a calendar. Okay, okay.
I don't know. We've got to order it.
So, um, Stan, to answer your question, though, so here we are in November. I would imagine that, um, by February, March, we might, will have that room completed. Kathleen, do you think that's reasonable?
Oh, I would hope so.
Okay, that's great. I'm, I'm just curious, right?
Yeah.
Um, is the library, oh, affected at all, like the, the, um, appointments by the latest, like, COVID numbers? Or, like, are visits still being allowed?
Yes, we, we are very fortunate to be, um, some of the libraries who had, um, more ambitious schedules and having more people in and having them stay for longer appointments. Some of the MVLC libraries are now starting to roll back their services because we had been fairly conservative with visitors. Our curbside, we, we've kept and we've actually increased the number of curbside hours. But our visitors' hours, we kept steady, so at the moment, we're okay. We don't need to make an adjustment going backwards. That could always change over time based on, you know, community health and, you know, should we get something from either the governor or, you know, at the federal level in January or something like that. But because we've kept sort of a slow and steady pace, uh, we're not having to keep readjusting. And honestly, I'll say, I think it's very healthy for all of the staff that we're not constantly shifting. I, I think having some things that seem maybe not the same normal, but at least routine, uh, helps to make it be an easier workday.
That's a good point, yeah.
Everybody's, you know, really feeling the effects. We've been doing this since March. So, um, a little bit slower, but steady and sustainable, um, may, may get us through the winter.
Great, because, yeah, that stress level of, um.
May I add that I, um, Kathleen is, and Cindy, they are working on a plan to make sure that this curbside, um, system works well through the winter because you can imagine with ice and snow and people shuttling back and forth. So, um, so they're looking into different options. And so we're considering how, how that will work with the building. So, but I don't think it's ready for prime time yet because it's still, options are being reviewed.
Well, hopefully, we won't have any of that for a while.
We, we, we appreciate your optimism, Anne.
In recognition of all of our scout leader members, we are planning to be prepared, so we're ready when it gets here.
I'm sure you will be.
That's right. Earl, Earl and Mark and I will be down there bringing the books out, right? We'll get the door, grabbing the books and taking them out to the cars.
Well, that's the other thing that Rick's great at, like keeping those walks.
Yeah.
Well, he's getting rewarded with a nice new garage for his snow, snow blower.
Yes, he is.
Oh, we got a new shed?
Yes.
We're getting it. He is extremely happy and extremely appreciative of getting that new shed. It's gonna make some of his work much easier.
Yes.
Are we paying for that?
Um, I think we're paying for it out of state aid.
Okay.
Stan just can't wait to spend all our money.
That's snowy day fund, right? Your snowy day, not rainy day, snowy.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we're kind of, um, jumping around here, but Kathleen, do you have anything more?
I just want to say that, uh, say that we did, um, sign the contract for the patron copier for two years. We got a reasonably, um, uh, good response from the RICO company, so that's been signed and been returned. So we're all set with the copier as well. And as far as, um, staff goes, we've been given approval to fill the empty. We had a library assistant position of 19 hours and the town had quit, um, filling positions on hold for the first quarter. So we've been told we can go ahead and plan to fill that position, uh, uh, as soon as we can get some ads out and start talking to people. So that will be good. We can always use more staff.
Okay, that's good.
So, I, yeah, the one other thing that I will just mention as an update, which will be, um, coming up, is that we have been, I'm sorry, already starting to talk about the, um, budget for FY '22. The budget instructions are out. I'll be sharing those, uh, probably next week with you. And we can talk about how we'd like to work on preparing the budget this year. We, we might do something a little bit different this year. Um, now that we've got a little bit more experience with some of our other accounts, we're in a better position to plan.
Um, Kathleen, my understanding is that for the coming fiscal year, the town is sort of shooting to give everybody a level services budget. Is that your understanding?
Yes. What, what we've been told to expect, um, is that FY '22 was going to be the year which we felt the impact of COVID because we had the Columbia Gas Funds, uh, that came in. They, this year, they've been really helpful in, uh, maintaining the town's FY '21, uh, spending that we haven't needed to, um, reduce staff or make big changes. But, but next year, we should expect it to be a level service year, not a growth year. And perhaps FY '23, um, all things going better in FY '22, uh, FY '23, we'll see it as a growth year again.
Well, that's good.
For the whole town and for the whole state and for the whole country and the whole world, not just us.
Madam Chair, if I just may add to Kathleen's excellent, um, explanation. A lot of people say, well, don't we have Amazon, you know, coming on? Didn't they just sign, you know, their agreement with Hillwood? That's true, but we're really not gonna see, other than the permit revenue, really the, the reaping of the benefit of their taxes until 2023. So '22 is gonna be a void year where they're gonna be constructing. So we're not gonna be having real estate and personal property tax in that year. So, um, if anyone was kind of thinking, well, we have this awesome. So um if anyone was kind of thinking, well, we have this awesome project coming on, you know, what's the problem? That's, that's what we're looking at. It's 22, we're going to feel the impact of COVID without the benefit of more Columbia Gas money. As well as we're not going to have received the benefit of the Amazon project yet.
Um Dee, isn't it also the case that because of the tax increment financing arrangement, that the initial revenues will be relatively lower from Amazon for a while?
That's correct. Yep, that is.
We won't be seeing the big bucks until, you know.
The end of the TIF, yeah, we will see the full um impact of the Amazon project. But it is, it's, it's a very beneficial project to the town and it will be in years to come. Yep. But thank you for doing that out.
Yeah.
That's it, Ann, if you want to go on to the, I think to the committees.
Kathleen, could I just ask a question about the, the parking plan? I'm wondering out loud whether it would make sense to um have the parking plan consider drive-through services.
Ooh, that's interesting.
Because I think this is the new normal. And uh, and so, and even if we get a vaccine, um, we could get a virus mutation, which will shut us down again. There's all kinds of things that could happen. Something to think about to just plan.
Like a covering, you know, like you drive through McDonald's or something with like a window and.
Yep.
Does anyone remember those little photos that they had when we had to actually have our photos?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I remember those little photos.
They were the, the parcel at the um, at the mall and stuff like that.
Yeah, the remotes, they called them.
Yeah. Um, I have, I have.
Now we have selfies.
I have noted that, Mark, and that is something. We've had people in the past want to have a drive-up book drop so they could drive up and just put the, the books in the book drop. So we've actually looked at how do we route traffic to the physical sidewalk area, if you will, of the building. So the, the plan, the CIP request is for the study and then for the construction of the parking lot. So we, we have a um, a preliminary plan that gave us a preliminary cost. My expectation, because next year is going to be a level service, we're not going to see that get approved for next year. That's probably going to move out to another year. So we have time to really put in some new requirements. And I, I think you're right that we look at some of the ways we've changed business now, that we're going to keep the way we made this.
Right, this could be, this could be maybe not the new normal, but well, the new convenience normal, right?
Yeah, this could be the convenience part that came out of it.
Right.
Hope it's not the new normal, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you.
So I've, I've noted that, so we'll incorporate that probably, we'll, like I say, I'm expecting that in the, looking at the capital improvement budget, we'd probably be asked to move it out a year, for instance. And that, and that's just my own personal opinion based on everything I'm seeing, hearing. There may be other more pressing expenses that the town needs to fund next year. And while we would love more parking, um, we can cope. Might be some, some building that needs a new roof.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on, um, the treasurer's report for October, is, is it kind of included in the annual one?
No, that, well, there is a report. I, it was dated uh November 10th.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fine. I don't think we, everything's on there, I mean, and some.
Yeah, there's actually, I'm, in looking at it today, actually just a few minutes ago, there, there's, there's an error in the check, two checks that are listed as deposits and they should be listed as payments.
Oh my.
So yeah, I don't know how, I, I.
How did we miss that?
Time to get me fired, I think.
Yeah. No, 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 Earl, Earl, not that easy.
Not in your life.
There's no escape for you.
No, we're not, you're not getting out of it that easy.
Kind of like at home, I always leave a dirty fork, you know, after I wash the dishes, so.
And do the dishwasher in the wrong way, right?
Uh, I don't, I do it right. Anyway, if you have the report um, under, you know, a couple of comments, but if you want to correct the report.
Yes.
The checking number for 1110, which now says 8154.42, should be 8098.42.
So which is this for? 11?
The, the 1110 uh TD checking endowment balance should be 8098.42. And our overall total, including our investments. And Stan, you, you had a question about this, so I know Stan reads reports. Eight, the bottom line should be 876,000, 872.03.
How about you update this and send me a new copy?
I, oh, I'll do that. Yeah, I'll do that.
I guess I'm, I'm a kind of, I'm not sure I'll get the right place. So if you don't mind doing that, Earl, that would be, that would be great. Send me an update, super.
Actually, because I have quick and up and running, I was able to change the report now, so I can probably, I'll, I'll email it to you tomorrow.
Right, that's fine.
Couple other points beyond the, the correction. As Mark mentioned, uh, we moved the money out of Eaton Vance into Fidelity. So even though he hasn't completed the allocation to the different funds within Fidelity, the money has actually left Eaton Vance and is uh what he's trying to finish uh investing is sitting in Fidelity as cash. So you can see as you move across the quarters, um, you know, the totals pretty much follow. Uh, you know, they're 828, 846, but I mean, you can see the sum of Eaton Vance and Fidelity. And when you get to the end of October, um, there's 82 cents left, left at Eaton Vance, uh, Mark. I want to make sure you go get that.
Yeah, I.
See how it grows.
It'll, it'll, it'll cost $20 to get that 82 cents.
Yes, yes.
Well, I believe what it was is, it's probably interest that accrued and after you move the money out, they paid the interest.
Yeah, I should, I, I, I think I can, I can transfer it over.
If not, I think we can find some. Of note also is um, we did get reimbursed by the town, thank you Dee, um, for the expenditure of $1,204 that, I think we talked a little bit about that last meeting, but it's actually made its way into the checking account. And we have moved, Mark, you moved $5,000 out of Fidelity into the checking account.
Correct. And do you, are you seeing that on the statement now?
I, yes, yeah.
Good, okay.
It's in there. It was on uh, October 20th.
Okay, so just, so Kathleen, this is uh, no, no more checks for you. You don't need them. No, no more hassle. It'll just be a straight transfer.
So, given that, um, you know, it, I guess from a bigger picture, you know, we, we're, I, I always say this when I report out, but our account balances have pretty much bounced back to pre-COVID levels. So there was a, you don't see it on this current report, but at, at the end of the last uh town fiscal year, so in April, May timeframe in uh 2020, you know, our accounts took a dip uh because of the investments uh in the market dip. But we've pretty much come back. And hopefully, Mark, as we complete our investments and take a look at where we're going heading forward, we can uh, you know, grow the money even more so.
Yeah, one thing that I didn't mention earlier that I should have is that um as part of this uh transfer funds over, we're also rebalancing our asset allocations to hit s- 60% stocks and 40% bonds. Um, and then, and it's, it's like 30 something percent plus a little cash. And one of the things that I also will do is I'll pick, I'll pick a couple of the dividend funds and have them sweep directly into, instead of paying, uh, instead of dividend rollovers to be reinvested, I'll have them pay directly, that, actually pay the dividends into the demand account. And this will save us a small amount of trade money. Um, we won't have to sell, essentially, if we do it right, we won't have to sell stocks. We'll simply take the dividend funds um in the demand account and transfer those to the checking account.
Sounds like a good plan.
Mark, uh, wha- what would you think about leaving some funds uh in a, in that uh cash account that you're, you're using now uh for that purpose too?
Oh, you, I mean, from the, from the transfer? Yeah, we can, we can absolutely do that. So it's not, I have to go look at the dividend records to understand what the volume would be. So it might be just an adjunct. So we might leave, say, suppose we wanted to keep 10,000 in the demand account for transferring. We could maybe leave 5,000 and let the dividends accrue to the 2,005,000.
Right, right. Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll study that when I get um, when I get the rest of the monies transferred in, I'll look at the dividend uh reinvestments that we have and then switch them around as needed.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, I'm done unless somebody has a question.
Okay. Anyone have a question?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Stan already had it. Okay. Um, so Eva, do you want to talk about the wreath? You're muted.
You're muted, yeah.
Yes, I'd love to talk about the wreath. So um, uh, I, here's the story. You know the, all the beautiful wreaths that are around town. We, we just put the um bows on them and the, the DPW should be putting them up soon. So our wreath, well, they're such a success that there's a problem. There are so many more people who want wreaths than there are telephone poles to put them on. So, nice problem to have. Um, so uh Rosemary called me and she said, would the library consider us putting their wreath on the library? Like they are doing with the police station. And you will recall that in the back at the um, the entrance facing the memorial, Patriots Memorial Park, um, there's the clock on one side to the right, and then there's a matching round circle on the building that has no clock. So the proposal is to put the wreath on the building. Um, I talked with Kathleen, I talked with Ann, um, I think Sandy, uh Cindy was involved in the discussion. And we sort of agreed that that would be a good solution. Uh Kathleen did her due diligence and she spoke with um, with Steve Foster about it and with um, with John Lavin from the DPW to make sure we could put it up and not damage the building. I went by, did the measurements to make sure the wreath was the right size. And lo and behold, there's a hook and eye kind of set up already there. So, um, so we are going to end up with a wreath on the building, right Kathleen? There's been no push, further pushback. The, the big concern was originally, we thought we would have to secure it to the, through the mortar in the brick. And we didn't really want to perforate that. Um, so I think the, the solution will be, we'll use that little eye hook. And um, and so don't be surprised when you see our wreath on the building.
That'll look really nice on the white background.
Now, now all we need is a spotlight on the lawn to shine on that at night, right? And would be all set.
Well, that's true.
Yes, yeah.
I think that would be relatively easy to do too.
I think so. Yeah, we could probably figure that out. Rick knows how to do everything.
Well, Earl, you're on it. Is there an outdoor plug?
Yeah, it's something could be hard.
There's an outdoor plug near the door. Um, that, yeah.
Couldn't put a cord out though, someone could trip on.
Yeah, well.
I know we can do this.
Yeah.
All right, well anyways, well, you can re, oh, whatever.
And it will, I have to say, it will be a plain wreath. I did talk about, I said, can I bring my glue gun and sort of put, put some things on it? But it didn't end up happening. And, and there was concern that they could come loose and hit someone on the head, so.
That's kind of a lame excuse.
Oh, man.
I know. Glue gun, wire it.
It's all. It's all Mary's fault because.
Mary's fault?
The, the one that's now run by lawyers. Watch out. Thing falls on your head, right?
As the staff person that oversees the town's liability program, I very much appreciate that.
So the important thing, I will ask you all to go by and see what you think. Because next year, you know, maybe we say that's exactly what we want. We want it every year to be there. And we don't have to be part of the whole, oh, where does our wreath get hung? We're going to be hung, right?
Will, will it still, I, my recollection is that those wreaths had little signs on them saying, this wreath was donated by.
Yeah, QR thing, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. It may, because that Rose, she had them all, all the signs put up, made up. So I can ask her that. I didn't, I didn't ask her.
I, I don't, I think in this particular case, it's not quite as important as it would have been, so.
Yeah.
Ann, Ann, um, I apologize. I'm bumping into a conflict and I need to drop.
Okay, all right.
Still have a quorum, I hope?
I think all your, all the investment stuff is done, so thank you.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Yeah, thank you a lot.
Okay, then let's move on to um, those were all the reports. The old business with the teen room is done. Um, new business, the Stephen Coolidge Place Holiday Stroll that we saw the flyer for, Cindy sent us, I believe.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, we sent it out today. So Stephen's Coolidge Place this year, instead of doing their winter lights festival, has um offered to let organizations or people uh basically sponsor a tree that you go in and you decorate the tree. The trees will spread out across the property for people to literally stroll through and admire the trees and the lights. It's a nice opportunity for us because of course, it's a, the usual events at the Stephen's Coolidge, especially the winter lights grew a big crowd. A lot of people would go through to visit. So having a tree there that said sponsored by the trustees, you know, in recognition of the library, it, it's a nice opportunity. There's a fee involved. Um, we can do a tree that's $70 where we do all the work. Or we can do a tree that's $300 where we do some of the work, but they take care of the electric outdoor lights. Um, which to me, I thought was a really big win. The electric outdoor lights are always the challenge. So the proposal is that the trustees consider uh sponsoring one of the trees at the Stephen's Coolidge Place. And my recommendation is the $300 option as opposed to this $70 option.
Right, and the, so then it says that it, how, it's the um, the decorated visitors vote for which tree they like by bringing food for neighbors in need. Ooh, that's pressure. We better, hmm, what if we get no canned goods? Well, I'll just bring canned goods. Put it on our tree.
We can vote for ourselves. There's absolutely no problem with voting for yourselves. Um, nobody's checking who voted. Uh, but, but it was a nice idea. I'm glad you remembered that part, Ann. So what Stephen's Coolidge has said is that when people come for the stroll, if they would like to vote for what they think is the best decorated tree, the way you vote is to, you know, bring in a canned good or something like that, that then will go to the local food pantry.
I'm not that familiar with the stroll. Is, is there an admission fee for this?
Oh, yeah.
For people who attend the stroll?
Now, we also need to make sure we get our tree right close to the entrance because people won't be wanting to carry their cans around, so.
Yeah, the, the tree's closest to the entrance, you get more cans.
One idea, there's going to be quite a competition for decorating, so unless we really step it up, I don't think we have to worry about that, winning that. But um.
I, I will tell you that we had our um full department staff meeting today and several of the staff members had very creative ideas. Um, this would actually be, if we get Stephen's Coolidge to do the lights, the staff will do the rest of the decorating and then. do the rest of the decorating and then you can just come and vote for what we did.
That sounds great.
That sounds good. Because there is a second opportunity for us to have a tree, right Kathleen? At the Stevens Estate, right? Did, you heard about that one Kathleen? You sent me...
Nope.
Oh, oh, so I was sending you something about this, I sent you a message Kathleen about the Stevens Estate, the Stevens Estate for their holidays. I know the Improvements Society has been invited to decorate a tree, so I thought the library was too.
I didn't get anything from Joanna and I actually talked to her yesterday.
Hmm, okay, well...
Are they still doing the holidays?
Yes, they are. So, so, interesting. Yeah, they are, but I think a lot of it might be outside, under the tent and they have heaters, so I'm not sure. I'm honestly not sure. Okay, so then we just have that one opportunity then.
So then I will ask then for the board to make a decision, do we want to participate with the Stevens Coolidge Place tree?
So that's good PR for us, plus it's a good cause.
Plus they also donate, I think passes through that museum pass program.
So, yes, and that it's a good creative outlet for the staff then.
True.
Yeah. So, shall I make a motion? Can I make a motion that we give $300 to the Stevens Coolidge Estate to buy a tree, sponsor a tree that will be decorated by the library? I'm not going to say trustees or staff, but just by the library and which will be lit by the Stevens Coolidge Estate, right? I'll second that.
Was that Mary? Was that Mary that seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Ann, I?
Stan, I?
Eva, I?
I.
Earl?
I.
Okay, we're all in favor. I'm excited to see it. I guess I'm going to have to buy a ticket and go to this thing. Bring cans.
That's actually one of the nicest ideas that I've heard in a long time, though.
Yeah, that's great.
Great concept.
And the food donation is really nice. That's a nice...
Exactly.
It's good PR for us.
Do we know when it is Kathleen? Do we have the dates?
We have the dates. I think it's the first three weekends in December. I can send that information around. It looks like they have...
Yeah, it's on the flyer, with one of the emails.
Yeah, it looks like 10th through 13th and 17th through the 20th.
So does that mean we have to make trustee assignments for each of the weekends so we get canned goods?
And we have to go over it because then you put the cans there and other people say, well, look, they liked it, oh, we should put our cans there.
Yeah.
It's just nine weekends then.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll be excited to see it, the creative ideas. And then the community support for donating funds to whatever the town has come up with, Kathleen?
Right, and this part, we'll actually talk to Dee about it. Ann and Stan and I had a pre-agenda meeting last week and I talked about the idea of the town is doing something to support the community and they are interested and supportive of doing something for the community. I don't know if we've actually decided yet exactly what we were going to do. So we could, in this circumstance, pick an amount of money that would be donated when the decision is made of what to do. There were a number of different groups in town who do different things like gift drives for children. We know there's a really much bigger demand for food in the food pantries and things like this.
Absolutely.
So amongst several town departments, we've been talking about how fortunate we are as town employees. We've held our jobs through this entire time. The town has paid us even when we had to stay home and not be able to get into the building. It just felt like a really nice thing to be supportive back to the community. So we don't know exactly what it will be. So one proposal was that the trustees would donate $500 to whatever this community support effort was. And I'll let Ann and Stan talk about that if you, $500 or more or...
Dee, can you give us any more insight as to what the donation options might be? You know what?
So we were thinking of more of a food and goods drive, personal items, because the youth center already does their fantastic toy and family drive, so they kind of capture that population. Senior does their giving trees, so they capture that audience. So when we were talking with Deanna Cooper, who is the community services coordinator, there's that group in between that, the pocket of people that we don't normally address. And one of the things that she brought up that I honestly would not have thought of is older children that aren't continent, that need diapers. I never would have thought of that. And the pantries, I guess, run out extremely quickly of things like larger sized diapers, adult diapers, things of that nature. So she sees that need in terms of personal, personal items like soap and shampoo and things of that nature. And then we also learned that there are some families that don't have adequate Wi-Fi or internet services. So we could get Verizon or Comcast gift cards for families so that they can have sufficient need for homeschooling. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways that we can go. So I've asked my department heads to get back together the week of the 30th and so we're not duplicating each other's efforts. But we're going, but what we envision is that we're going to do kind of a interdepartmental competition to see, because a little, you know, a little healthy competition always kind of gets people going and, you know, proportionately whichever department gets the most, you know, donations gets a pizza party or something like that hosted by Melissa and myself. So what I, what we're thinking is just that, that need in between of toothpaste, toothbrushes, things that those of us take for advantages that we have that, exactly, that Deanna sees on a daily basis that people are starving for, literally. So that, so the senior population is pretty much taken care of to a good extent by what the, you know, the giving tree and then the youth with the youth center, they do that amazing Christmas, you know, clothing and toy drive. So what can we do for those people in between? And just to reiterate what Kathleen said, you know, we've been very fortunate in North Andover that, you know, even with the food drive and the summer, you know, food distribution program, I mean, the community has been so giving and so, and stepped up so much that, you know, I think that the employees also want to do something back for the community because we have been blessed with, you know, being able to still work and get our pay and our benefits and not lose any time. We've had very few positive cases, so we've been able to stay open. So I kind of thought, well, what can we do that's fun for the holiday season that doesn't require us to all get together because we can't do that, but can also show to the community how much we appreciate being a part of it?
That's a great idea.
Dee, really, so since the selectmen's breakfast won't happen this year, will that money go towards something like this?
That was something that I had on my agenda to discuss with Melissa. So what are we going to do with those funds in lieu of not being able to do the breakfast this year?
So Dee, if it's just us, the library, by ourselves, is $500 enough? Should we do more?
Actually, we're doing it as a division, so, and then as a community. So the community services division, there are six of us, so all of the human services divisions plus HR, so veterans. So Joe LeBlanc is going to send me a list of what he sees that veterans need because their needs are probably maybe not diapers and whatever, it could be something very different. You know, and we have youth and rec, library, community support, which is Deanna, HR, and then you, of course. So we have, we go from birth to grave, pardon the pun, but we do cover the entire, you know, scheme of the community. So what we're trying to do is then bring in some of the heft of the larger departments like police, fire, DPW that have a lot of employees. You know, I just think if our 212 employees brought one canned good, imagine the good that we could get with that. And you know, people tend to be more generous this time of the year. We have thanks the night before, right? So we kind of put the two ideas together to say, what can we do as a division? But then I took a step back and said, what can we do as an organization to help during this time? Because I think this is a very particular year where the mood is so much different than it has been in any year with people still out of work, with restaurants now that, you know, we have the curfew and it's cold, you know, parents are getting laid off and so, you know, like the holiday needs this time of the year is going to be more than I think we've experienced in the past. So we just wanted to step up and recognize that as a, within a community. So we're employees, we serve the community, but we're also part of the community. We want to show that.
So our donation of money would go to someone who would then purchase stuff? Is that the way that would work? Okay.
Yes, and Kathleen could be the custodian of it and then we could decide, like her and I kind of really caught on to the Wi-Fi. We both kind of latched on to the Wi-Fi learning and when someone doesn't have Wi-Fi and they can't literally go to school, that's an issue. So we latched on to that and they do have income based, you know, Comcast and Verizon both have income based programs, but it's that in-between section of people that really, you know, qualify for certain benefits, but they need it.
There's also the, you could also consider buying hotspots.
Right, right.
Depending, because that's a permanent solution without a monthly fee in the long run. Now, that may not solve all people's problems, but the hotspots have become very popular at other libraries. And if the town was to do something like that, now people have a permanent solution. You know, I'm not sure it's as good as, you know, getting it set up at Verizon or something, but it is something that, you know, they would have forever or for long periods of time. Just a thought.
So that was one of the, one of the things when we heard about this, it seemed very appropriate that the, that our gift would support the schoolchildren, in particular the families with schoolchildren. Obviously, we can be supportive in many ways and we could go spend $500 on, you know, socks or toothpaste and, you know, shampoo and stuff like that, which is also needed. And it may be in the end that that's what they need more than the Wi-Fi cards, but it just really, it really fit with what we're trying to do, which is to support the community, support the children, support their education.
It seems like if we want to do something like that, which sounds to me like a really good idea, by the way.
Yes.
That we ought to do more than 500.
I think we should, yeah, I think 1,000.
At least 1,000.
At least, yeah.
Is 2,000 too much?
I don't know, we don't have our budget.
Kathleen has 1,000 in, so whatever you guys want to put on the table, we'll take.
But I'm thinking back to Cindy's idea, so I'm thinking if it was hotspots, right? I'm just betting that that's 100 bucks a shot, right? So that's only 10 for 1,000, right? So that, that money doesn't go very far. You know, 10 people, 10 families will be, will feel really good about that, but that's, you know, we're not going too far. And then with, you know, with Verizon or Comcast cards, that's okay, but, you know, those run out. I mean, then, you know, if they couldn't afford it before, when the card runs out, they still can't afford it, so they're still stuck for it. So, you know, I'm just thinking if we're going to do something, and I like your idea by the way, let's do enough so we're kind of having enough impact to, you know, make it worthwhile.
Yeah, we can find out more about the cost and things. One of the things about the, supposedly having an arrangement for the families who needed it, that their cost would be $10 a month and so for the school year, so a family would receive, would receive the cost of nine months worth of the Comcast connection fee. Need to go back and verify what the Comcast, the terms are with the Comcast deal to see how that would be.
Right.
And Cindy said about the hotspots.
Spots, so don't you have to pay like for the data? Well, I don't know, maybe they're different. I know we had one at the Cape and it was like, kind of expensive to load it up with data.
The libraries that are loaning hotspots, the libraries are eating the cost of the monthly data connection. So you buy the hotspot and the patron is taking the hotspot home to use.
Oh.
It's actually covering the subscription cost for the data line is my understanding.
And maybe you can get like unlimited data on, like, improving.
Anyway, it sounds like Kathleen, you were right, you need to give us more information about all of this, so...
But, but it's going to be coming up before we meet again, so we should vote on an amount.
So, nobody flinched at 2,000, right?
So make it 2020.
Do I hear more?
How about 5,000, right? How about 2,500? Is that, how about that? That's a number that, again, remember, we've got, Mark's got all that money under his mattress, you know that, right? His mattress is stuffed with cash, right?
We waited till Mark left, we talked about this, don't you? We waited till Mark, we had this discussion.
As soon as he leaves, we start spending his money, right? I make a motion that we, 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 the trustees, use $2,500 from our endowment for the purposes of providing something good for the members of our community for Christmas, period.
I second.
Okay, is everyone good with that amount? Oh, we'll just vote. So, myself, Ann, I?
Stan, I?
Mary, I.
Earl, I.
Eva, I.
Okay, then that passes $2,500.
Thank you, that's extremely generous of you.
If we could, I would...
Every one of you.
We want the free pizza.
It's so important. That's going to be hard to beat.
We want to win, no.
Generous, but free pizza, right?
It's only $500 a slice for you guys.
Yeah.
I don't even eat pizza anymore, sorry.
Okay, next item, moving on, is the staff recognition. Usually we do that luncheon in December. However, Kathleen has some new other ideas.
We can't sit in the meeting room and we can't do a buffet. One idea was to still have the staff have a meal on us. Each of them a $20 gift card to Boston Chowder, which would let them go one day and pick what they wanted for lunch or, you know, pick up a container of soup to take home for dinner. So Ann and I thought that met a lot of nice goals that they have to pick and there's no safety issues around because everybody goes and gets their own food.
So what would that, what would that be for all the staff? How much?
For the 23 staff, it would come to $460.
Well, you and Cindy too.
I think we're talking in the 20s.
Okay. Don't you feel hungry?
The other way to do it is just to... The other way to do it is just to say a $20 gift card for each staff member and then if I've miscounted it, 23, we're covered on the vote.
Yeah, okay. Or we could just say move to, uh, allocate $500 up, no more than $500 from the trustee endowment.
Should we do 25?
Recognition.
Our guys are generous, very generous today.
Well.
Anyway, we're giving away all the time. We do 25? What does it usually cost, Kathleen?
We're expecting you to spend what you're going to spend, right? That's the not to exceed part, right? You spend what, what, what you need to spend and, you know. So that's what.
Yeah, uh, $20 per person definitely at Boston Chowder, you would get a nice meal or you could take something home.
Yeah.
You could even get a lobster roll.
You could, you could.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, and, and do we want any other like little something with it? Like a little, I don't know, bookmarkers or?
No, more of Eva's calendars.
Dessert, oh.
I will tell you that they really like the little box of truffles that come from Van somebody or other down around.
Okay, so let's see, that's, I think those boxes are probably what, around $4 for a little box?
No, I think they're a little more than that.
Let's say five, five, do you think?
What, so maybe we should say, well, uh, $750 towards it.
Yes, good, good.
Cause that would like.
Let's do 750, I got that. So it's a gift card plus a box of truffles, right?
Gift card, okay, gift card.
I'm in my motion to be $750.
Okay.
Anybody going to second that?
I'll second it.
All right.
Mark's going to be sorry left, no.
I know. Stan, you've made all these motions, you know?
I didn't ask for that much.
I know. Well, it's a job easier. Good point, he can only, he can only get mad at me, not anyone else.
Stan's been very generous today.
It makes his job easier, he has less money to move around.
Well, we've had this, we've had this money burning a hole in our pocket for so long, we had to do something good and Christmas seems like a very appropriate time to do that, so.
God bless us everyone.
Yeah.
Stan, if you can. All in favor? Anne, aye?
Yeah.
Mary, aye?
Eva, aye?
Earl, aye?
Mary?
Aye.
Okay. Woo! And then last, the last thing is friends of the library recognition. So last year we got them those really nice book bags, so I mean, I don't think we can do that every year, but, um, should we get them a little box of truffles too? Or that's kind of difficult. I don't know. What do you think Kathleen?
We don't see this much. Stan had a nice suggestion, which was just a, a really lovely, um, holiday card or, or thank you card. And I say lovely and somebody handwrites them. I did go check. Actually need to do only 15 cards, the, the core group of the friends. And at least three of them are couples, so a card to Mr. and Mrs. Somebody or other. And, and Stan had, I thought Stan had a nice idea. I think sometimes that personal touch is, is as nice as, um, some of the other things people get.
I agree.
That's true.
We could also ask, um, I know at the historical society, they used to have some cards that with Phyllis paintings on them. So that would be nice too, if we could find, you know, it does show those, that was.
I'm surprised you guys aren't recommending calendars.
Those are $20, Earl. Already bought theirs.
By the way, you guys, I've gotten email every time I order a calendar. So thank you for your support.
You're going to have to go to a fucking printing.
Um, so, and what I, I like the idea of Phyllis painting. I also know, you know, the educational council used to have those notes that they sold and they had nice cards of the library. But I don't know if there are any, cause wouldn't that be the most appropriate?
So what I will tell you is that I have a box of those in the drawer that we, we bought them a while ago. So I think I saw them recently. I can go look and see if I have those cards still. And if that's the case, then I will hand them over to somebody with much better handwriting than me.
Oh, yikes.
That would be, Eva, that, Eva.
Yeah, that would be me, I think.
Yeah, that's definitely Eva, yeah.
And I would get you the addresses for the.
Okay.
And we could, we could chat about what to write, I guess.
The sentiment should be, yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I happen to know Mary has nice handwriting too. She's sitting there.
Maybe you could split them up then.
Very quietly, I happen to know she has very nice handwriting too.
That's right.
Happy to help out Eva.
Okay, all right, we could. And in fact, we could make an appointment at the library and go sit and do them together.
Oh, that's.
Six feet apart with your mask on.
Sit maybe in the teen room or something at two inches of the room, but we could do it. We might be able to do that, Mary.
But we also don't have any tables or chairs either.
And I could sit at the computer table.
Funny, it is, it's funny, you think, oh, just meet at the library and sit at the table.
They could, they could.
Computer tables. Sit at a computer table.
On a weekend either.
Area, yes, yes.
Get on a weekend, so.
Okay, well, I think that's, we've come to the end of the agenda. Anybody have anything else? Oh, we have the next meeting date.
Yeah, so I, um, have been looking at the town calendar. Um, they're asking if we can possibly have two, no more than three committee meetings on an evening. And so in looking at December, it looked like meeting on a Wednesday night again would be, um, better in terms of spreading out, uh, the calendars. But the other possibility is that, uh, we not have a full meeting in December and instead Cindy and I have some one-on-one meetings, like one with Anne, one with Stan, um, one with Earl as treasurer, one with Eva around the building that we put together, that we do work groups to, uh, look at the budget and that we, um, then when we come to the board for the early January meeting, we've really worked in more detail on the budget. And we get to skip the December meeting.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Uh, when do we think our January meeting would be?
We were looking for the first Tuesday, um, after New Year's.
That's January 5th.
Right.
Yeah, I think we had, we had already blocked that out, I think.
And the, um, the reason for that is that the budget is due to the finance, um, office, I think on January 12th. So we want to, um, have a chance for the full board to look at it before it goes, uh, into the finance department.
And you, and you would be sending that out prior to that so we could look at it before the meeting?
Yeah. I, I'm going to be in Westfield on that day. I'm not sure about my availability. I might, I might have two hours in the car on my way back, so I might be able to call in, but I'm just iffy, just so you know.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Anne, are we done?
I think so, unless anybody has anything else. There's nothing else on the agenda, so.
No.
Okay, then, um, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yes.
And Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas then.
Happy New Year.
Happy Hanukkah.
Wow. Yes. We won't miss 2020, we'll be. Okay, so we have to adjourn.
Yes. Have to have a motion.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Anne, aye?
Stan, aye?
Earl, aye?
Mary, aye?
Eva, aye?
All right then. Okay, adjourned at 6:40. Thanks everyone.